7:00 PM. This is meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of tonight's posted agenda. Please note that if you are interested in making any comments during the time, please raise your hand and we will promote you. Depending on what the conversation is at the time, members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken this evening will be by roll call. Again, members who wish to be heard on the agenda item, please raise your hand and we will promote you into the room. The chair will review, okay, sorry. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So to begin, I'd like to take a roll call vote.
Corey Evans here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Okay, we are all present and accounted for. If there's anybody here who would like to make public comment, we'll give you a minute to raise your hand and promote you into the room. If not, we'll go on with our agenda. Tracy and Justine, is Chris ready?
He's logging in now.
Okay, thanks.
You're late, Chris. I don't know where Jack is, if anybody's heard from him. I sent a link to you guys right around, I think, six. Seems like everybody got it, right?
Yep, thank you. And I believe Chief Sylvia is in the waiting room, if you want to promote him. Okay. Okay. Can you hear me? Am I moving?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. You know what, I disabled my Wi-Fi on my nearby.
I can tell a difference.
So, great, thank you, everybody, sorry about that. So I was saying, we haven't had a community update in quite some time. Probably two or three, at least three weeks, maybe four weeks, which is probably a relief for the chiefs. And in many ways, a relief to all of us because it means we've sort of gotten over the hilltop. But welcome, we are going to get an update tonight because there's a lot of moving parts right now in terms of reopening and lifting up the emergency declarations. So I'll turn it over to, we have Glenn joining us as well, to Chief Sylvia. Are you first up?
I believe I am. Chris, I just about five minutes ago finished you the completed PowerPoint. Just we'll do a quick PowerPoint. Person, I think that's the easiest way to go through this.
Would you like me to be your AV guy, chief? Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
Either that or you can, you can.
I'm fine.
The power, it doesn't matter, one way or the other, but whatever works.
I'm good. Hold on one second.
And while I'm waiting for that to pop up, I will just say, what a long, strange trip this has been. The good news is that the, we believe the end is in sight as long as everybody continues to do the things that they've been asked to do. So as Diane mentioned, the last, the 17th, the governor, all of a sudden in his press conference, informed us of two specific dates, and one was May 29th, being this coming weekend, and the other one, June 15th. And on the 29th, there's new mask guidance. It's no longer a mask order. There's some use sports guidance involved, there's industry guidance, there's summer camp and K through 12 education guidance, as well as on June 15th will be the state of emergency. And we'll update that as we go through. If you go to the next slide, Chris. So here's the really good stuff. As of the 29th, the face covering order is rescinded. There will be a new advisory consistent with what the CDC has put out. So we will be looking at CDC regulations, and I think DPH is going to follow those very closely as we go along. It will recommend that vaccinated individuals no longer to wear, need to wear a face mask or socially distance indoors or outdoors, except for certain situations. Face coverings will still be mandatory for all individuals on public transportation and healthcare facilities and other vulnerable, they're talking about congregant care and airplanes, whatever the case may be. Non-vaccinated individuals are advised to continue to wear face coverings masks and to continue distancing in most settings. And face coverings will also remain required indoors for staff and students indoors at school and early education. Next slide, please, Chris. So then, do you sports? On the 18th, the requirement for kids under, or all the kids, anyone under 18, all athletes, they no longer have to wear masks while they participate. And on the 29th, all restrictions are lifted. That is, everything from gatherings to face masks to everything that goes on. They are back to, I almost want to say the old normal. So the new normal will resemble the old normal. So next slide, please, Chris. As far as industries go, all the guidance that EEA has had out there, everything comes to an end on the 29th. So all industries are open. That includes such things as Fenway Park, Boston Garden, and any other large venue you can think of. The gathering limit is, will be rescinded on that same, on that same date. And as it says, capacity will increase to 100% for all industries. Now, there are a couple of caveats in there. And again, they talk about public transportation systems that will require masks and facilities housing vulnerable populations, AKA nursing homes, congregant care, that type of thing. And then obviously, all industries will be encouraged to follow CDC guidance for cleaning and hygiene. Next slide, please, Chris. And on effective May 18th, the DSE, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, said that outdoors for kids, they no longer have to wear masks and that they can share objects in classrooms. And that's going to go right through the end of the school year. And they also updated the guidance for summer camps, effective as the 29th. So we'll have a slide here in a minute that discusses that, but requires no masks for outdoors, outdoor activities at all summer camps. Next slide, please, Chris. So, all of that being said, that's the 29th. So on the 15th, the state of emergency will end. Now, this slide, we created this slide last week because we didn't know exactly what we were going to be talking about, but it did say that the administration would be working with the legislator and their municipal partners to try and figure out exactly what they have to unwind. Because a lot of the things that were done were governors' orders that automatically come to an end. Some things will have to go back to the legislature. And if we go to the next slide, Chris, hot off the presses as of today. Governor has filed legislation to extend a couple of things, or three things specifically that I wanted to talk about. One is the temporary suspension of the open meeting law requirements. So as of the 15th, we are not required to go back to regular in-person open meetings. What the governor has proposed in the bill is that we will allow this type of meeting we're having tonight to continue through September 1st, and it will give the legislature, the municipal government, and the governor's office time to consider other options, such as hybrid approaches to meetings, possibly part Zoom, part in-person, whatever they might be. So that goes through to September 1st. And the second one was the special permits for expanded outside dining and obviously alcohol service. The governor is going to give the municipalities the authority to extend the special permits through the end of November. So that'll be up to the board to make those decisions. And then the last piece is the billing protections for COVID-19 patients. This was created so that people that were, that suffered from COVID or whatever were hospitalized. Some of the things that they were going to be billed for were not in play, and those protections will be, again, continued. Now, remember when I say these, these are proposed bills in the legislature because the legislature is the one that has to enact these. The governor, with the end of the state of emergency, no longer has the ability to create the governor's orders that we lived under for 14, 15 months. Next slide, please, Chris. So reopening Cohasset. What does it mean to us? As it says here, we're working on our transition from everything COVID-related as far as restrictions to normal operations. The new normal will, again, resemble, in a lot of ways, will resemble the old normal. But it took us 14 months, as Chris said in a meeting earlier today. It took us 14 months to get here, it's going to take us more than 14 minutes to get back. So we are working on that. We're also working on the pre-COVID processes and services. Everything's being reviewed. We're trying to figure out some of the things that we learned in the last 14 months were actually good things. And maybe we will continue to use some of those things. So those, all of that is being reviewed. We collectively, meaning the entire, all the staff in town, we've been working at this since last Monday, when the governor kind of dropped this on us in a surprise. And I have to tell you that we met today, we're meeting again Thursday. We have a staff meeting with folks on Thursday afternoon. We are trying to get all of these pieces in play with the goals of, you know, we know that the goal is to try and get going early in June with everything, and we'll see exactly where we go. So please, we appreciate your patience as we reopen town government and the town itself. Next slide, please, Chris. So a couple of examples of what we were talking about, things we're working on. Recreation, the summer programming is up and running. Ted told me that he's going to reduce the group sizes a little bit, and that's a, that's a good thing for him. And he said, the summer basketball program starts the first week of June. So those brand-new basketball courts are going to be in full-tilt operation. Couple hundred kids have already signed up. It's really good stuff. The library, as you know, they're already open for browsing, and they're going to continue to open up their building and add their programming. So again, that's a, that's a great thing. Elder Affairs, opening will cut common next week. Now, programming is going to, you know, come online slowly but surely as Rook can get there, or the staff at Elder Affairs can get all of those things going. And they will also start scheduling their meals and their rides and their summer coffees and all of those things. So again, a really good thing. Veteran Services, obviously, Memorial Day. I don't believe Philip, or I should say, the Veterans Agent Mahoney is going to change anything that he proposed to you guys at this time. But what does it mean? It means that if we want to go to the dedication of the healing field, or we want to go down to the ceremony at the harbor, the restrictions on gatherings do not, are not in place. So we'll see exactly what that means. Some of these things, it's happening so fast, I really can't tell you exactly where we all are. So, and then the big one, Town Hall. We will be, one back, Chris, next, maintaining all services. We are also reevaluating some of our processes and our methods on how we deliver some of those services so that we can make sure that we do this as well as we can and that safety is maintained. And we had a conversation today about safety in the building. And a few years ago, and I'll let Chief Quigley speak to that if he'd like, a few years ago, a little safety assessment was done at Town Hall on some of the things that we could do to try and make it a safer place for the employees, as well as everybody coming in and out of the building. And what we came up with today was that we're only going to open the front door to Town Hall so we can somewhat track people as they come and go and keep an eye on things. So right now, for the time being, it won't, the back door won't be open. It'll be front door only, and we're going to try and, not trying to limit anybody, what we're trying to do is just do things as well as we can. And we don't know what the pent-up demand for people trying to get into Town Hall is going to look like. So we're going to, we're going to work on that as the weeks, in the coming weeks. I think there's one more slide, Chris. And then that's what I talked about at the top end, which was the virtual meetings. The plan is to still be doing virtual meetings. I'm sure there will be some in-person meetings as we transition through here. And we'll be watching the governor and the legislature to see exactly what they come up with. So I believe that's it, Chris. So death by PowerPoint from Chief Sylvia is officially over. And any questions?
Still with you. Yeah, I have a lot, Corey has his hand up. Go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, so thanks, Chief Sylvia, for the great, really great news. For, how does this apply to private businesses in town, especially with mask mandates? Are they able to set their own regulations if they, you know, try to protect certain populations? Can you speak to that a little bit?
So as we, as we have been told, it is up to the individual businesses. Businesses can do, the restrictions are off, but if they choose to, you know, put a mask order, not even an order, but an advisory at each one of the buildings, they're fully, they are allowed to do those things. So that'll be up to the individual businesses. I think that, you know, that's going to be part of this. There'll be people that will still want to wear masks, and there will be others that, you know, will choose to. But as far as the, the orders go, they're now going to be mask advisories. So there's no, there's no penalty, there's, there's no enforcement, it's just an advisory. So it'll be up to the individual business owners, I would think. But we, on top of everything else, on top, I'll just finish that up with, on top of that, Pam, Pam and Mary will be working on that. And again, you know, by, by next Tuesday, I think we'll have, we'll have a lot more answers on exactly what DPH is going to recommend.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few, and you answered most of them in your presentation that I had been jotting down as you spoke, chief. But one question about our own state of emergency, whether, whether we know yet, whether we have to take any affirmative action to remove that. Maybe Glenn knows.
I'll let Glenn speak to that. Yeah, the guidance and recommendation from Mass Emergency Management Agency is we should release our own state of emergency sometime very soon after the governor does his, or before if we want, but certainly very soon afterwards.
Since it's likely, I mean, we have a meeting scheduled for the third, but that's a very specific topic. I mean, should we schedule a meeting just to do that, or wait till June 8th? Or does it not matter?
Well, it does, it probably doesn't matter. It's a lot of the things that we do under our state of emergency probably won't be allowed once the state has lifted there. So if we are shortly afterwards, we're probably going to follow state rules anyway.
Okay, great, thanks, Glenn. And then just to kind of put it out there, I know that working on the Get Out Cohasset program has asked, because of the restrictions being lifted, is that going to change our approach to that? My initial answer was no. The idea was really to almost make up, in a lot of ways, for some of the lost opportunities they've had. But if anybody has a question or comment on that. Yeah, Corey.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think that, you know, the mask question, I think, obviously, we're doing great for vaccinations. Our community is really, you know, just impressively at the forefront of this. However, I think there's still caution. Caution's never a bad idea, and, you know, having outdoor events, especially on beautiful days like today, I think we should do everything we can to make that easier for people. Just, there's no reason not to. So, yeah, I still fully support the program as.
Of course, on that. Agreed. Carrie?
Yeah, just to add to that comment, I think that, like the chief was saying, some good things have come out of this year, and we've learned some things that people really like. I do think it's worth considering keeping our outdoor dining and letting our local restaurants and businesses know that we're willing to move forward with that in the future and, you know, keep planning with how we can make that easier for businesses. So I think that it's really good for all of us to be thinking about the things that we want to keep from this past year. It might not be many things, but I think there are a few.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. Paul?
So I think this is, you know, fantastic news. The bottom line, like what Corey said, the vaccination profile for the state, and even all of New England is spectacular. There are still going to be some, you know, high-risk individuals that either have not been vaccinated or can't get vaccinated. So, you know, respect people if they're still wearing a mask. I think this is going to take a little bit of time for people to feel comfortable doing the things they did a year and a half ago, going out to dinner, sitting down in a restaurant, going to a bar, going to a baseball game, indoor theaters, indoor museums. So keep that in mind. The, you know, the ability now is really out there to get social again. So just be cautious, be careful, be respectful. The vaccination profile, again, is, not only is it good for prevention, but it's also where the CDC raised the mask recommendations to those who are vaccinated. They can't get the severe disease, but they also can't transmit it. And that was, that's a big key element for, you know, shutting it down. And if you have enough people vaccinated, that, that's going to be a big thing. But all of the businesses, I think, are looking forward to this. This is a, this is a huge step. That's it.
Thanks. One other question I have, which is, again, may not be able to be answered by this crew, but just in terms of contact, our contact tracing, is that something we anticipate will continue in the future? Because, you know, COVID's not going away.
I know Mary, I know Mary through DPH. Yes, that's going to be an ongoing process because there are going to still be people that are going to be, need to be tested, for whatever reason. A perfect example would be people that travel that have not been vaccinated. The travel advisory says that you need to be tested prior to going away, and then prior, three to five days after returning. So there will be tests, and there will be positive tests, and some of those will probably involve contact tracing. Now, the good news on the contact tracing is, if you're exposed to somebody and you've already been vaccinated, there's no big deal. Mary used an example of a family where one of the children was, was tested positive, but the rest of the family had been vaccinated. There was no contact tracing required. So contact tracing is there. Mary will continue to do that stuff, but the, I guess the guidelines for contract, contact tracing have changed because of the vaccination numbers. It's Dr. Shu.
And this is a little tangential, and I don't want to dive too much into this because it might fit somewhere else on the agenda. But Chris, do we have an update on some of the American Rescue Plan funding? And whether there's any additional guidance on that?
So I'm going to be circling back with Don to meet with you folks in June. So one of the things that's still ongoing is the county is still uncertain as to how it's going to handle its role. I met with my colleagues in Norfolk County by Zoom last week, and their acting county manager said that, well, two of the three commissioners seem to want to mostly get out of the way. One of the other commissioners was unsure, and they were still waiting for guidance. Something did come down today, but that really only had to do with the first cut. That was the, and we were expecting to get that passed through anyway. That's a little.
Straight to us.
Yeah, so that's going to come in two tranches, one this year, one next year. That totals $800,000, so we'll get $400,000 this year and $400,000 next year. And there's another 1.7 million,
But is.
which is allocated pursuant to the counties. And that's still what we're not sure is going to happen. So some of my colleagues.
Yeah, the question.
So, go ahead.
The question I have on the, let's just say, you know, the county one is, you know, we'll figure that out. But just the $400,000 that we're getting, is there any specific guidance yet on how that can be spent?
Yeah, I'd like to have, you know, would you? I'd like to have Don and come in and us talk about this as a group before anything's done. Don't pay with the money until, until there's a consensus, so. And different tranches coming too, in different directions. So this is the, like, directed towns, but there's also a school budget that's coming down, and there's money for a variety of other things. And I think, probably should do something in June, I think, you know, just have a night and we can spend a little time talking about that.
Figure out whether there's a subgroup or something, or whatever. I want to make sure that we're, we, as a, as a community, stay on top of it and leadership in terms of, you know, deciding on the priorities based on the framework that, and guidance that's given by the federal government. Okay. Great, any other questions? Does Glenn or Chief Quigley have anything on this community update topic to add?
Just, just one thing, and we talked about this in the early meeting today. Just ask that the board take into consideration any, you know, does the potential for, you know, groups to inundate us with event requests for the summer? And, you know, for every week, every day in the weekend? Just, you know, the board should consider that, you know, the police department, the fire department, board of health, you know, all the folks that are integral in, you know, supporting these, these events. You know, we have been working, you know, every day for 14 months. So, you know, we just, we're just concerned about, you know, sort of free-for-all this summer. So I think it's already started out to be very busy. And we have to be mindful of staffing and, you know, regular operations.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. That was the question I had with respect to contact tracing because I know, you know, it just hasn't, it hasn't stopped since March of, March 1st even of last year. So we will absolutely be mindful of that, and it might be a topic we want to discuss because as much as we want to permit everybody to go out and have a good time and return to normal, it is going to be incredibly taxing on, you know, the town employees who've been going nonstop since March 2020. So I think Paul had his hand up first, and then Corey.
Yeah, that was actually what I was going to comment on is that, you know, the social calendar is now going to be packed solid for the next, you know, three months in the summer. And the town has done yeoman's work from, you know, from the emergency management, from the police, from the fire, from the Town Hall, from, you know, the Department of Public Health. All of this is going to get kind of overloaded. And just to put that out there, you know, the people that are going to want to have these, exactly what Chief Quigley said, too many things back to back to back. And the other thing I want to mention is that the Moderna vaccine will probably get okay for kids 12 years on, 12 years of age and up, probably next Thursday when the ACIP meets. So that will help the schools as well and get the more vaccination for the younger kids. That's it.
Thanks, Paul. Corey?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Chief Quigley, I know you guys have been busy also on the front of just keeping, you know, public safety front. We've had kind of an uptick in some things, especially, I think, some break-ins recently. Any kind of updates on any of those cases or anything like that? Just, that's worth sharing with the community regarding, you know, just how we, how we're keeping our town safe.
Yeah, so it's a good question. We, we, we had a, we experienced a bunch of car breaks a few weeks ago, two, three weeks ago, not in the area of North Main Street. We had some pretty good video of the suspects. And we run a, an email server for South Shore detectives, and we put, you know, the information is shared amongst all the detective bureaus in the South Shore, and we're able to get a match with some of the stuff. So we've, we've made, we're charging at least one person, probably two, that were stopped in Hanover and found with some of the items that were stolen in Cohasset. So it was great work on, on the part of the detectives, getting the information right out quickly and getting word out on social media. And, you know, and we really, if you have a home security system, it's really a great thing to have, and we encourage people to, to have them and use them. They're really, they're instrumental in solving these things. Even with, you know, Amazon packages gone, going missing and things like that. So in some of the systems nowadays, they're really, they're inexpensive, and, you know, you don't have to call an attrition into wire your house. They just work off your Wi-Fi and also off, you know, rechargeable cameras that, you know, last up to three months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? So thank you, everybody, and thanks for these past 14 months. We can't say it enough. Really appreciate it. The next thing on our agenda is licenses, permits and events. And there's the both of these applications are still pending and need review, does the review. So these would be for extension of premises. So we're not going to do that this evening. So we will move right on and we're actually just a few minutes early for modifications to parking fines. So Chief Quigley, you got to come back and join us.
Do you want me now for the parking violations or?
I do.
Oh, great. Okay. Do you want me to just jump right in?
Please do. Thanks.
Yes, so last year, the board assisted us and and opted to make some temporary changes to the parking fine structure. There are also some permanent changes that took place and that was in probably mid-August last year of 2020. And, you know, we we asked that you that you consider those changes again for this year because last year it really did help deter a lot of the the it it helped with the overcrowding in Sandy Beach, Government Island, Wadley Park and the end of Parker Ave. So we're asking that you consider, you know, raising the fine again. The fines sunsetted on parking without a permit or parking with an expired permit. It sunsetted in October. We'd like to have you consider enacting that again for the for the same period, well, from from now till probably October or whenever the board deems fit to make it $100. So it's it's 50 now. We'd like to put it back at 100 for the summer and that should help with crowding. We're really expecting a banner summer and I'm really a little bit nervous about, you know, what's what's going to happen. You know, sort of, everybody's been been unleashed, so to speak. And you know, we we can see, you know, already in the last couple of weeks, we did, you know, a lot of a lot of drinking, a lot of partying, so fights, things like that. So we really want to get ahead of this, especially Government Island on the water, Bassin's Beach. The the sandbar and places like that and, you know, curbing some of the folks without permits and folks from out of town that are utilizing parking on Government Island and Parker Ave and places like that. $100 fine would would serves to get their attention. $50 is sort of a bargain. But $100 has proved to be very you know, a a good remedy.
Correct, yeah. Any any comments on that? I mean, I'm fully supportive. I I I think I would be supportive of permanently moving the fines to $100. But the, just the other thing I want to ask is, this is just, these are just parking fines, you know, is there anything that's needed? Not necessarily by board action, but otherwise to kind of beef up the patrols or whatever on the beaches or on Government Island or in the in the on the waterways. Because I remember last year it was kind of a I can't say the word I'm thinking of on television, but it was, it was sort of a fiasco. We anticipated it was going to be a fiasco. And I think to your point, Chief, it's going to be maybe worse this summer because we've all been cooped up for so long.
Yeah, so we we have, we're actually unfortunately a little bit short on special officers this year. It's all the, you know, with police reform, a lot of the training requirements have changed. And that has impacted us. So we're 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 trying to keep up with with the new regulations and and, you know, we have to be in compliance with them. So we have one officer in the academy now where we're in the process of hiring two more special officers. But at the same time, we're losing three to surrounding towns for permanent, permanent positions in in other towns. So you know, and this happens every five years. It's it's not out of the ordinary, but it's just, it's, you know, it's a bad time right now. So we're we're going to, you know, we're going to continue with those special patrols on on the the weekends around the harbor. And, you know, work with the harbor master and also environmental police and whoever else will give us a hand to try to curb some of, you know, really the opening partying that that occurs on the sandbar. And, you know, truth be told, you know, we we ran a lot of the boat registrations last year. And we're we're drawing people in from, you know, Winthrop and Revere and, you know, a lot of the places on the North Shore. And Situate, you know, this 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 atmosphere used to happen in Situate on, you know, on on the spit, they call it. But Situate has done such a good job chasing them out of there that they've they've found us. And it presents a, you know, serious safety problem.
Yeah, that's our concern. Well, let us know if we can help or advance any creative ideas.
No, and Chris has been, Chris has been helping out and he's he's made some great suggestions and I've coordinated with the Situate Police Chief and talked, brought Laurie into the fold about our role. So hopefully, and and Chief Sylvia as well. We were talking about even having a medic available. You know, to be with us because we're experiencing medical aids out on the water as well.
Thank you, Chris, and then?
Yeah, I I just just to piggyback on what Bill was saying. So Safe Harbor has also been working. Heard about this already collaboratively with the Sailing Club and the Yacht Club about safe. So they're really stressing, you know, don't drink and boat and really pushing out through not only students but parents as well. And the yacht club and sailing club folks have really bought into this and which is great. So there'll be a lot of informational materials as you, you know, head to the waters, you know, reminding people not to do that kind of stuff. I mean, it's one thing for adults to have, you know, some wine or beer on a boat, something else to go out there and get hammered. I mean, you can really, I mean, water is not unforgiving. And you can't stop a bottle of that. It doesn't work like that. So the there really has. And I want to, you know, Nicole and the whole group at Safe Harbor has been really working on that and we're hoping that's kind of a positive effect too. You can go out and have fun. You just don't have to get, you know, drunk doing it, right? Be safe, you know, and we're hoping that message will get through more of the summer.
Great. I'm Corey.
Uh, it looks like the chief, if you want to just
Corey, sorry.
Oh, I
Chief, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Sorry. I didn't mean to jump in on you. There's a little bit of delay. Chris is exactly right. We we've had a bunch of meetings with Safe Harbor. And we actually, we we talked with the folks from from the Sailing Club and Yacht Club. And we're going to, we're going, we're 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 getting ready, ready to shoot a video. Like a beginning of summer video with the officers that are assigned to to Marine Patrol and also with Safe Harbor. And we're going to have a little fun with it, you know, talk about bridge jumping and you know, alcohol and boating doesn't mix. It's it's going to be, you know, a a high quality video and we're hoping to push it out by probably mid-June, third week in June. Literal written script right now.
Go ahead, Corey.
Okay, yeah, you're jumping in that, Diane. So I just, yeah, all the thoughts about keeping people safe. I was just, and it's not on the agenda today, but just status on if we could on the the speed limit revisions and and any, you know, efforts to especially keep the, we talked about, you know, keeping downtown a little bit safer. We talked a little bit about deciding what streets were appropriate for higher speed limit. You know, I'd love to get an update from you on that pretty quickly since we're kind of entering to the you know, as you said, the main kind of celebratory time here. I'd like to get that stuff squared away. That way everyone knows what to expect. And and we're pretty clear on it.
If there's a, if there, yeah, I I'd be comfortable, Chief, if you could just update on the speed limit situation under the this guise of safety that we're going after.
Sure. So you you probably noticed, so, you know, based upon the the board's vote back in February, the the change took fa- effect. The reduction in the the fundamental speed law took effect on May 1st. So it's sort of a soft rollout because there's so much going on. But with the signs are up and we 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 had problems with the vendor trying to get the signs out of into production and and out of the hands of the vendor and on the pole. So those are up at most and all the entrances to town. We want to further add signs to all the inroads off of 3A. So Pond Street, Beechwood Street on both sides, King Street, Sawyer Street. Just so if someone comes in off of 3A, they they have a heads up as to what the the speed, what the safe speed is. We we do have, I we I've met with, met with Chris, talked, met with Chris today virtually along with the DPW and I I think Chris is looking to carve out some time in the agenda, I think, the next week or the week after. And we're, you know, we're going to do a full presentation and we're going to ask the board for a couple of votes on on, you know, the direction you want us to go in. But you're going to have some options to think about and we're going to try to get that information in your packets as soon as possible. So you can sort of read over it and digest it and and but we've been working on it, you know, for weeks and weeks. It's just a lot of coordinating with the vendors and, you know, getting quotes for signage and things like that. So it it it's a work in progress. And and again, we we just just talked about it, you know, this afternoon.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? And if not, I'll ask for a motion regarding modification of the parking fines if somebody is willing to move that.
Can I jump in for one more thing, Diane?
Sure, Corey.
My hand went back down on the back up. So
Didn't see it, sorry.
I've just noticed a couple of times, whenever I drive down North Main Street, we still have a little bit of confusion about I've still seen people drive in the parking spaces. And so I'm just wondering if there's a piece of equipment or something we can put on that side of the road to make it clear that this isn't, you know, with, there's a car park there, people seem to get it. But when it's early morning and there's no one there, there seems to be like every once in a while, a two lane event kind of happening. So thoughts about putting something there, just the beginning of it to make a clear kind of physical demarcation until we figure out something more permanent?
Yeah, so I I was with, you know, Brian Joyce and Chief Sylvia this morning, early morning, and he was actually on the phone with the vendor. Letting him know he wasn't happy with, you know, first they tried to paint over the lines and that didn't look good. So they they power washed the yellow paint from the from the lines off. They they power washed it off, but it's still not good. So he's a he was, you know, trying to find a solution with them today. But I I think that, you know, an island, you know, and that's going to be part of the presentation next week or the week after about, you know, clearly denoting you know, what what side of the road is because I I see the exact, exact same thing. And, you know, to be fair, it's really not clear. It it's, you know, especially at night.
Great, thank you.
I make a motion that we move to amend the town parking fines to $100 through, when did you say, the end of October?
2025. Who's who's October 1st?
October 1st, 2021.
It's just the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in.
No, no, it's fine.
It it's just the areas where a permit permit is required. Sorry, I'm having a prison riot here.
Okay, sorry. I have the same thing going on in my house. Okay, so the motion is
The required comments for the posted areas necessary.
Parking. Great, thank you. Any any other discussion? We're clear on the motion? Great. So I will move for a roll call vote, beginning with Corey.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Board committee appointments, updates, et cetera. So in our packet is a list of election workers that we need to reappoint. Chris, can you remind me of the terms if you know them? Is it for a year?
Yeah, I believe there, I believe there are annual appointments, Diane.
Annual.
Okay. Yep, thank you very much. Would somebody like to move it? Read the names.
It's fiscal year and it's it it covers, it says FY '21 through '22. So I guess for the fiscal.
Okay, okay.
Uh, make a motion, we reappoint for fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 2022 the following election workers. Abigail Als, Joseph Estino, James Carroll Jr., Jody Doyle, Bernadette Faulkner, F. Roy Fitzsimmons, Kelly Gretsch, Richard Harries, Deborah Kripsec, Rebecca Matty, Virginia Najmi, Ruth Nadro, Susan Ryan, Pearl Smith, Lauren Walsh and Kenneth Warner.
Second.
Thanks. Okay. A roll call vote, please, or any any comments? Questions? Great. Corey?
Thanks for everyone that works for our elections. Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you. That's done. Moving right along to Cable Advisory Committee. Corey, are you taking this and sort of describing to us the status?
I mean, I'm I'm ready to do it, Corey. I have a quick memo that I sent to all of you just a little bit ago. Is that fine?
That is wonderful. Thank you, Chris.
So there's two things. So with cable advisory, basically cable advisor committees are are established under the law to advise the appointing authority or the the franchise authority, which in this case is Select Board. Generally on on the franchise contracts or the franchise licenses, I should say. And they generally in in their their, the core of their responsibilities comes for roughly about a year before the renewal, because they, there's an ascertainment process and stuff. They have to look at what's going on through the renewal and then they kind of, then once it's stopped, wrapped up. Now, in some communities, the the boards continue because there's no other cable. In Cohasset, there's the Community Cable 143 TV, West Community Cable. So there's already an entity that actually, you know, runs things between the contract renewals. So there, you know, the board has historically kind of continued to appoint the committee, but it doesn't really have to now. I mean, the right now, I was just double checking. The Verizon contract doesn't expire till 2024. At least that's their plan. They're planning to just wrap, go fully wireless by 2024. I'll believe that when I see it. And then Comcast doesn't expire till 2029. So there really isn't a need for Cable Advisory Committee again until 2023. So basically, two years from now. And obviously we'll watch. I mean, if something, if there's some reason because some law changes or something, the work can always reactivate it. So it'll be my recommendation to effectively kind of hibernate that committee with an understanding that it should pop back up again in two years, in 2023, a year before the Verizon contract expires. And and then, you know, and then it would hibernate again until 2028 when it popped up again. And then you don't have, again, i- if at that point it makes sense to, you know, make the 143 Board the primary group on that, that's great. But again, I think you determine at the time, this really no reason to appoint that committee annually when you already have people on terms on 143. Is that kind of summing up for it?
Uh, yeah, and well, and the terms for Cable Advisory Board are one-year terms while the 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 terms for 143 TV are three-year terms. So you've got this very, very awkward, you know, appointing process as well. And literally, I mean, I'm on the Cable Advisory and the 143 TV Board, as everybody knows. Cable Advisory Board hasn't had any business for two years. You know, I mean, it's 16 months. There's just, there's no, and so, yeah, the recommendation would be to move it to ad hoc status, basically. And yet again, the last time the contracts took about six months to negotiate. These are fairly boilerplate. We, you know, there's basically you get the same contract with the towns around. It's unfortunately not within our power to save. Everyone gets high-speed cable for $10 and 1,000 channels. That'd be wonderful, but that doesn't work that way. You know, we tried. But, you know, so it it is a six-month kind of review process to renew these contracts. But outside of that, the Cable Advisory Board doesn't really have a function until that point.
I think Diane
I'm trying to, trying to push myself off ethernet so I can get a better signal. But Paul, question?
So I was going to make a motion that we not populate the Cable Advisory Committee for the, for this year and wait until we necessarily need to populate it. You know, I don't want to, I I don't want to, you know, remove it because I'm sure there's some bylaws or there's some constructive components over that if we dissolve it, then it'd have to be re, you know, reconvened. That make sense?
Great. So Carrie seconded, thank you, Paul. Carrie seconded it. And I actually have a question, Chris, just about procedurally, is is that what we're supposed to be doing? Is is Paul's motion?
Well, I I I mean, so I'm not sitting as town council, but, you know, it's it's logical to me. This way it's clear. You're telling everybody we're not appointing anybody and it's in the minutes and then and you won't reappoint people until 20, you'll revisit the issue in 2023. Or if there's some, you know, change on the law that requires negotiation.
Great, thank you. So we have a motion in a second. If there's no further comments or questions, I'll go for a roll call vote, beginning with Corey.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye. Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Right?
The second issue is a little.
Next.
Yeah, the second one's a little more complicated, um, but not really, so um. Once upon a time, I I'm afraid I didn't, I didn't pull, I I read all the minutes, but I don't have the dates in front of me, so when when CPC was created. The Committee Preservation Committee to implement the Committee Preservation Fund. Uh, there were three classes established by town meeting. One year term, two terms, a three year terms, rolling into three year terms, so you'd appoint one third every year for continuity, makes a lot of sense, right? And then the power was given to the select board, and again, this is the memo that I sent, but I'm going to show you a couple of charts in a second. And for whatever reason, and I can't quite tell from the minutes, they're a little vague, and it may just be how they got appointments. Like some committees move fast and some move slow and and they, it it just seemed they pointed the the citizen members, the noncommittee members. At the end, so they just got the one year terms for some reason, so they are all in the same group. So as as this board is discovering, you know, he, you may have people who are interested to be only once every three years, it's kind of hard to get interest in a committee when you're going to look at people once every three years, particularly one that lives every year. So the the challenge is how do you reset the terms? And and again, how do you reset them um, without cutting anyone's term short? So I actually took a look at this, and let me just, I'm going to share my screen for a second, so she can all see. So what you have now is this, if you can see that, right? Um, those are the current classes, and I say the class because they're in like clumps, right? The planning board, housing authority, historical commissioner in one group. Open space, select board and ConCon are another group, and then the three citizens are another group. So I took a look at to try to turn into what's the option on the next slide, so. The, and I'll show you uh, what I'm recommending, I'm asking you to vote on this, I'm at least that, just absorb it, think about it, and then, you know, if you have a better idea, come back. So it would be the planning board, select board and a citizen. Open space, ConCon and a citizen, housing authority, historical commission and a citizen, so every year there'd be a citizen seat available. Um, again, the people can also, you know, resign or retire or move out of town, which happens sometimes. And this is how it would happen. So in twenty twenty one, there's three appointments coming up, the planning board, the housing authority and the historical commission. So what I would recommend is that. One of, again, it doesn't have to be these particular ones, but I, just for ease, the first planning board, you give them a three year appointment. Housing authority and a soul commission, each get a two year. The next year, twenty twenty two, open space gets a three year appointment, the select board gets a two year appointment. And you do the ConCon for a three year appointment. And then when you get to twenty twenty three, you're going to be appointing. You're going to be appointing the housing authority and a stall commission again for a three year seat, you'll be appointing one citizen for a three year seat. The next year, you'll be doing planning board and select board for a three year term, and then one citizen's up. And the following year, the other citizen rolls in the other class, so it's kind of a, it it does take. It does take three years to get it done, but you don't cut anybody's term short this way. Um, and again, it's it's not, it it. It's it's, I think, take a time to absorb it and take a look at it, you know, it makes sense, and I think I, I think I timed it right, so it it works, and there's not any more than nine members, it doesn't, you know, change anyone's, the number of members of the committee. And it doesn't have to be these particular, I mean, you could pick any combination that makes three, three, three. Um, and again, if somebody resigns along the way, you can always change the terms then. Um, the alternative would be just to change terms now, but that could be kind of, I mean, you could, I think you could. Uh, and reassign them to slots, I think that might get a little messier. Um, but it could be done, the other alternative would be just to force the change right now. And you kind of reset uh, everything, you. Five terms have to be reset out of the nine in order to make this work. Um, and uh, it it does, it does work. So, does that make sense? I mean, again, I'm not asking to adopt it, does that make some sense? Okay.
It, Chris, it makes perfect sense, kudos to you for figuring out the math and um, how to make this work, this is something, by the way, that. Um, has been discussed for probably. Last nine or ten years because the citizens all.
You're freezing again, Diane.
I'm, or is is a real problem, sometimes we. I'm sorry.
I hear you.
Yeah, yeah, say that, say that sentence again, the citizens want.
If the citizens all drop on the same year, you know, it's sometime, and sometimes we can't get all three at one time, it's um, challenging, so this is something that I know. Russ has been involved with trying to reset, and we were advised that we would have to go to town meeting to do it, which is why. Um, it has gone on this long, but here we are, and and Chris has done research to realize that this is something we can, we can get done through the reset that he's proposing, so. I I'm all for it. I just want to say one other thing, we did receive um, an email after somebody reviewed our, um, from Susan Sardina about adding. Um, a liaison position to CPC, and I did respond to her, um, just for the public's knowledge and those of you who. Did or didn't receive my response, that the positions are prescribed by state statute on CPC, so we can't change the liaison roles. A- a- at all, but we can tweak the terms.
Paul, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, the, you know, the liaisons can be a nonvoting person that the. One of the committees recommends goes to the meeting and just audits the meeting, so you know, it's it's outside the. Mass general law, but certainly you can ask someone from any given committee to show up at the meeting and and audit it.
Absolutely, and 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 I'm glad you brought that up, because I say that all the time, you know, just because there is chair, and I don't know it. A a chair that isn't willing to take, you know, comment and. From other, especially other liaison, so does everybody, you you know, want to? Um, kind of sleep on this, and then we'll revisit it on our next agenda, and it'll just be something that we can go forward and um, hopefully vote on.
So Russ is in the audience, Diane with his hand up, do you want to recognize?
Okay, I didn't see that, so if you want to promote him, please, oh, here he is, thank you. Russ, can you hear us? Would you like?
I I can hear you, can you hear me now?
Great, yes, we can hear you, thanks.
Yeah, on on CPC, I mean, the problem was that. I mean, it was only started, what, twenty one years ago? And everybody started off at the same space or place, so everybody's going to come up every three years, and I think what we need to do is. As someone leaves, uh, rather than appointing somebody to just the remainder of that term, is to appoint them. Uh, for a three year period of time, uh, so that you start getting things staggered. Because right now, and all all the uh, all the seats come up at once in in little clusters here and there.
Great, thank you for weighing in on.
I'll tell you, Russ, I'll let me share, I'll share the memo with you, so you can see it. And you can comment, I just set that up, I just finished it this afternoon, so. Occupied, so if you have any thoughts, just share them.
Okay. Okay, and we'll um, put this on our next agenda, sound good for a vote?
Yeah.
Great, okay, um, next, I just wanted to mention that, um. Well, just in general, we are at that time of year where um, we are going to be seeking. People to apply for positions on committees, and also I think on our next agenda, we will have a very lengthy, hopefully, discussion a- about. Um, both the recruitment process, which I I encourage all of you to reach out to people, um, we're going to get a list um, in the next week or so. Of the positions that are available, um, Tracy usually reaches out to. Uh, the chairs of various committees and boards and commissions, and let them know whose positions are up, as well as the people whose positions are up, and we'll start um, building out, it takes a while. As you, as you may recall from last year, um, but we will do that, and I also want to discuss, I went to a really good. A good webinar that um, I shared with um, Chris and Miriam. And um, I I do think we should discuss some mandatory training or in addition to the ethics law, um, ethics program, just some. Um, civil discourse, how to conduct meetings, and and we'll talk about whether or not, um, you know, what kind of a program we want to put together for training, so that we give our boards and committees. Um, every tool that they need to succeed and do their job, I think that's something that we owe the people who are serving um, in our government, so, um, Chris?
Now, I just want to say, I I did get the chance to listen to the program the MMA just put on. Uh, when I was in the office over the weekend, preparing for town meeting, and I kind of had it on behind, and it was really topical, I got to say, there was a lot of. A lot of scenarios, I'm like, oh, know that one, know that one. Um, but it was, it wasn't, it was a very kind of informative kind of, yeah, let's keep yourself, it was like a, Steve Gummery used to put it, a risk management presentation, right? It it wasn't a, it wasn't an accusatory one, it was like. So I do think that the MMA program, and it's it's about an hour long, uh, was really productive, so it might be something that we might be able to. Uh, I I I'll circle back with Miriam and Ron to see if there's a way we can put it up on our site, and people can go look at it or something, so.
Okay. And and then just what's on our agenda is the school facilities committee, so if you remember, um, we've been talking about this since, I believe, February. Um, the school has appointed three people, um, the select board has three. Uh, positions to appoint to, and the moderator does as well, we have about six or seven applications. Um, that are in the queue, and I'm working with the office to kind of just organize who those people are. And um, spoke to the moderator in the last couple of days, and I think what we might do is bring everyone that is interested in serving on that committee. In for a quick little interview, Zoom is probably the best way, they can come in, they can leave. Um, and then we'll leave the appointments to another meeting, um, and we can make three appointments, and then, and so that committee. Um, because that really is a long term, um. You know, this is going to be a committee that's very active for the next couple of years, and um, we want to make sure they they get off and running as soon as they can, so we'll try to do that by the end of the month. Um, any questions on that? And again, thanks to those who submitted, and that's the other thing, I'll talk to Tracy about, I just want to reach out to people that do submit. And make sure that when they send their application in that there's a response from the office that we've received it and we'll be in touch. Paul?
So the the list of people that are uh, applicants, will we get them? And then whatever's left over, will the moderator be able to appoint those remaining?
So I mean, we'll have to talk about that, I think we should, you know, have the interviews of everybody, and Dan will participate in that, and then we can. And you know, then we can decide on our three, and then he can decide, I don't know how many will be left, depending on whether we get any other applications. Um, how he wants to proceed, I mean, and he technically, by the the by the bylaw, I think, could. You know, just appoint somebody on his own, but I I do think he's interested in sitting in on on the interviews and understanding, you know, what the what the right. Um, balance is for that committee, um, so. Um, anyway, so we'll have more discussions about committee recruitment service and and populating. Um, and making appointments over the next couple of weeks and months. Okay, so, next up, um, is transient vendor license discussion, um, and it. Um, and I'm going to ask to promote Annette Satchak. Um, so let me just give you a little bit of background, typically, at this time of year, we um, issue transient vendor licenses. Um, in the past, there have been three transient vendor licenses, and that it's basically in 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 old time parlance, the ice cream man, so the the trucks that drive up and down and through neighborhoods. And um, and the licenses typically run from May, from Memorial Day through Labor Day. Um, so that's the reason I put it on the agenda for tonight, um, because Labor Day is coming up, however. We actually don't have full applications from um. From two of the the transient vendors that we usually permit. Um, and the other one knows that we're not going to be making any um, renewal decisions tonight. Um, and that reason is because we wanted to have a discussion with Sandy Beach Association, who has some concerns about the um, the the. These transient vendors in the parking lot, um, so I wanted to talk. Um, with Sandy Beach Association, find out what some of the concerns are, and see if there's some way we can address them in the permitting process for the transient vendors. So Annette Satchak is joining us from Sandy Beach Association, so. You're, if you want to unmute yourself and. Sorry, you know, no problem at all, thank you for hanging in there.
Oh, thank you very much for having me um, tonight. Um, we've been getting more and more concerned over the years um, with the transient vendors. Um, and particularly now that we have the snack bar, um, you know, we're a nonprofit, the, we provide the same kind of ice creams and snacks that that the vendors do. Um, and we have a, it's easy, it's a, we feel it's safer, they come to the snack bar window, we've got the trash cans there for trash. Um, and the food trucks are um, for the basically ice cream vendors. Um, the one vendor in particular, we get complaints about it from the neighbors, and we get complaints about it from the people on the beach. Um, he comes zooming in the parking lot, playing that same song over and over and over, and then as when he parks the truck, it continues to go until he leaves. Um, and I had several calls from beachgoers last year, um, who said, could you just have him, you know, stop the music and. And it's becoming a safety issue, I feel too, um, the parking lots getting, you know, more and more people are coming to the beach, and it probably will still be this summer, because there are a lot of people still working from home. Um, they take up, they take up a lot of spaces. Um, the traffic, you've got young children who are running up to the trucks, and they don't always, you know, watch. For cars coming and going, so that's been um, an ongoing issue for us too. The other, one of the other big issues for us is is the trash they leave behind, so the ice cream vendor comes and he hands out the ice cream, and the kids take the paper off, and they drop it. On the parking lot or on the beach, and they don't have any responsibility for for their trash, um, that they are creating at the beach. And, you know, we have our BMWs in the morning who pick up the trash and clean the beach, but that goes on all day, and it just flows around, and it just collects more more trash unless somebody picks it up. Um, the other thing is, um. The money that we earn from the snack bar, we're putting, we're funneling back into the into the beach operations, which are. Being, beginning to be more and more expensive every year, you know, everybody knows the minimum wage has gone up significantly this year. Um, our insurance has gone up, cost of hair cleaning the beach has gone up. So we are, we are um, looking to capture that money to help us continue to run and manage the beach. The. Food trucks are, um, none of them are local from Cohasset. So one particular one, I think, is from the North Shore, um, Dell's is not locally owned anymore, that was sold. Um, and known as, I don't, I don't, I don't know who's applied for their um, permits. Um, and known as is in Hangum, um, so we are asking that. Um, the selectmen consider not issuing. Um, either not issuing this, the permits for them to come to the beach, and they can go to other places in town. Um, or or if you decide to just not have a come town law.
Thanks, Annette, any questions from the select board members? Um, my understanding um, is that, you know, in in. Issuing transient vendor licenses, we do, we can set some parameters if if we choose to do so. Um, in terms of where they can and cannot go, um, they they're part of their agreement is um. Is to, you know, pick up their own trash and or not leave trash, but I think the nature of being a transient vendor. Um, is such that they're selling the stuff and driving off to the next site, of course, and um, so that's really obviously a hard thing for us to control and consider. So, Carrie?
Thank you for these thoughts, Annette, I'm struggling a little bit with. You know, how we allow some transient vendors at the beach and not others, I'm I'm trying to figure out, you know, where the ethical guidelines are there for us.
Can I, can I just stop you? It it, I I don't think that's a, that's something we should discuss or propose at all.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Whatever decisions we decide to make would be applicable to anybody that meets the general standards of of these applica, you know, the applications. Corey?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, no, that was the point I was trying to make, I was getting nervous that that would be a possible outcome, so. Yeah, go ahead, Corey.
Yeah, no, I just, um, this is the, the first I've really considered, you know, kind of the downsides, I mean, my my initial reaction is. Um, you know, uh, somebody that goes to Sandy Beach and loves Sandy Beach, and also loves when notice, truck comes to Sandy Beach, the idea of of keeping that away, and uh. You know, I know the ice cream truck is still a source of, I think, uh, you know, childhood joy from all our memories. Um, so I I'm I'm a little bit reluctant to to. Limit that, but I think your, the concerns you raise are are really, I mean, valid, and and especially, you know, I think speed, I I've seen some trucks going in, and there's a lot of people running around, so. You know, I I think for me, now that I'm aware of it, I really want to monitor it and 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 learn about it. You know, I I don't think I'd be so comfortable, like, right now, saying, we're just, we're not going to let these things on Sandy Beach, I think that'd be a little bit abrupt. Um, but I certainly, I think the concern is is super valid. Um, it's something that, you know, I I want to keep learning about, so we can create a really, a policy that really works. Um, you know, both for the people that are at the beach as well as uh, the vendors, but, you know, we want to keep people safe, but we also want them to, you know, have the services that they love part of summer, so that's kind of a very long winded. Explanation of how I'm feeling about this.
Paul, your thoughts?
Yeah. So, yeah, I agree. I mean, one option we could do is is limit the hours of there or, you know, find a way to to help, you know, police the the beach afterwards from the town point of view, whether it's picking up trash or helping the traffic to make it a little bit safer. I agree. I mean, I think it's it's a bouncing act, you know, the the ice cream truck coming by in the on the beach in the summer, that's, you know, that's, that's pretty special for a lot of kids. And, you know, I don't want to be the one to say no ice cream for Sandy Beach, which that would not go over big for a lot of people. But I think they're valid points, you know, do we, do we assess the hours of there, number of licenses, the, you know, the the rotation of the, you know, of the people that that are the vendors would be one option. That's it.
Just, but I see Carrie and Cory both have their hands up again. Just a couple of other pieces of information. One limitation is that there's no, no more than two transient vendors can be in the parking lot at any one time. That was a zoning decision many, many years ago. And I believe that we we will, I don't know whether we're limited to the number, but we've only typically had three transient vendors apply for license, except I think Seabird had a, had a bike one, one year. So, you know, we, we can think and then at our next meeting, make some, maybe make some decisions on any kind of restrictions that we feel might be 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 worth implementing, including, you know, I think with the music in particular, that's something we can just, you know, ask people, I believe me that I've sat at Black Rock Beach and heard that awful noise go by. So I think we should think about all of this in in terms of limitations and restrictions and 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 have a more fruitful conversation and a decision because I don't want to prolong it too much because I know these vendors are going to want to get get busy. I will also say that last year I spoke with one of the vendors and they claim that they don't go to Sandy Beach all that often. So I I think it's probably worth just understanding a little bit about, you know, these, is this a daily visit by all three or, you know, do they, how long do they stay in any one place? I'd be curious to to know a little more about that. I'll go to Carrie and Cory and then Annette, if you want to follow up.
Yeah, I also had a question about whether there are ways we could make the parking lot more safe in terms of rules or restrictions for these vendors, maybe a certain place they have to stay or park or a way that we could make it safer is one option. And also, Annette, I just had a question for you. Obviously, we want Sandy Beach and the Snack Shack to succeed. Has the Snack Shack added anything to their menu or added hours to their menu? Because I know one great thing about a lot of these vendors coming in at certain times is that it supplements the Snack Shack in terms of products they don't offer or you don't offer or hours that you might not be open. So I didn't know if you were keeping the same hours and menu as last year, but I'm just going to say, I think that a lot of people like having the variety of the Snack Shack in addition to vendors.
Yeah, we, we open at 11:30. We close generally somewhere between, depending, you know, if it's a Monday, we tend to close at five o'clock. There aren't a lot of people there. If it's a weekend and it's busy, we'll stay open a little later. We always close by by six o'clock during the week and seven o'clock because those are the hours that the beach runs. One of the other, one of the other things that I have is that last year, the police and fire department helped a little bit with the, with the parking. So they did not allow them to come into the parking lot. And so they, and so they used the sawhorses at the north end of the beach last year because they were getting a lot of people parking, you know, parking there on weekend, weekends to climb over the wall and go to the beach. These are people that didn't have stickers. And so they put the sawhorses there, but the, but the vendors were allowed to move aside those the sawhorses and pull in. There were not supposed to be more than two at a time. And the, the ice cream truck that plays all the music, he is in and out of the parking lot all day long. Seven days a week. He starts at about 11 o'clock in the morning and then he'll sit there for a while playing the music and then he'll leave and then a couple of hours later he comes back and he does that until, until we close. So that's, that's probably one of the the hardest ones is because of all the complaints we get about about the music that goes on and on and on.
And that, just, just a quick follow up, the, the, the music vendor, I'm just going to call him that. He, he also was restricted though to that north end section last year, or was he driving through the parking lot?
He was driving through the parking lot until, until we finally, till the gate guards said that you could, he could not come through the parking lot. Then, then instead of getting out of his truck and moving the sawhorse, he just drove over the sand dune instead.
So I, I certainly think for just for consideration, that is something we can certainly make very fine point restrictions on this. There's a place. There's, you know, we can control the the noise and 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 the music and and then, you know, we can also revoke a permit if if they're not adhering to those requirements. Cory, your hands up?
Yeah, I think that literally just covered everything in my head. One was the idea of having that other area reserved. I like, you know, and it's also really only enough space for two trucks. I like the, you know, if we can put restrictions on noise, I mean, I think that's completely reasonable. And I think we should be very direct about taking those permits back. You know, driving over sand dune, not acceptable, violating the noise, not acceptable, violating the no more than two vendors, also not acceptable. So, you know, and that, thank you for putting us on notice and we will be sure that that notice gets gets passed along when we do make an action here.
I have one more comment for Carrie. I didn't complete her question. We do, we do carry all of the same ice cream novelties that he carries. And then we also have the the smoothies and the drinks and all. There's really not anything except probably known as, we don't scoop, we don't scoop ice cream.
Okay.
Is a prepackaged ice cream. But we do sell this frozen drinks and all of that.
So Chris, can I ask you and you know, maybe working with Jen or Tracy and Jen to just investigate and make sure that we can put some of these restrictions that we've discussed that, and also that that section of the parking lot is, is, and again, they're not going through the parking lot. They they pull in separately, whether that could be designated for these transient vendors, no more than two at a time. Whenever that happens, I mean, I think, you know, if if we try to contain some of this, you know, I, I, I think they'll make smarter choices about where they go and where they don't go. But I want to make sure that we have everything so that we can provide these restrictions upfront with the applications that we get for transient vendors and then also whether we will have the authority with one infraction, you know, to revoke a permit and or what process we would need to go through to to do that.
Can I make one of the comment? I believe the reason that there are only three licenses right now, I believe that was done by zoning. When the, when the food trucks were first allowed, they they put a limit of three licenses only. So I think that's why there are just three.
That is correct. I noticed that somebody has Q and A. We're not monitoring Q and A. So if if whoever has typed in, if they want to raise their hand, we'll promote you to make a comment on this. Appreciate that. Chris, do you have enough direction from us in terms of sort of what we need to figure out before we make a final decision on issuing these these permits?
I think so. And I'll start about with Jen. I know Jen is working on the details. By the way, I don't think the town, I'll double check this. The town is limited to three vendors. That was the limit at the beach.
Right.
Um, so you know, you can limit more than that. They just, there's limits to what, how many, how many can be there at the beach. Because they also, by the way, have to go through public health inspection. So, and then, you know, there's multiple levels here. They all have to pass a health inspection. I think, oh, you got Mr. Laes joining the meeting.
Yep. I just want to make sure that whatever limitations we put on are, you know, we can, we can hold them to it. We can hold them to the restrictions. And I see that Dan Leahy is here. If you want to turn your video and audio on and identify yourself with your name and address, that'd be great. Hello?
Yeah, good evening and thank you. The vendors were there and I've been going there for 40 years because there was a need. There was no other food substance for the kids or the parents. Now we have a fully functional snack bar that contributes 100% to the beach and the upkeep. So why are we looking to have competition when we already have the need fulfilled with an entity that's covering everything the people at the beach would need and they're cleaning up the beach, et cetera, and employing our youth? The vendors do nothing. They just take the money and go. That's, that's my inquiry, I guess you'd say.
Great. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. So we'll revisit this as soon as we can. Does that make sense? Any other questions from the select board? Great. Thank you so much, Annette.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me.
Appreciate it.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Okay, so we are just a few minutes early. That would be a little more early than this and we have an FY21 budget update through April. And Don Payette is here. And I glanced over the information. So we continue to have good news, I think.
We do. Chris, if you just want to share the local receipts first. Sorry, just be with a second. Right. So, yeah, so general fund looking in good shape. We are 94.2% collected through through April. Definitely seeing a lot of our revenues better than anticipated through these 10 months. On a local receipt side, the more volatile side, as we've discussed every month, is about 97% collected. We've had a bit of fluctuation here from prior years, but for the most part, we're looking in really good shape. I mean, 97% from 10 months is really good. And and on the previous slide, when we're looking at overall, I compared it to last year and we're, we're about two and a half percentage points ahead of where we were even last year. So very, very optimistic on the last couple of months of this fiscal year. Again, 94.2% overall last year through April, we're at 91.9%. We'll continue to monitor. I know local receipts within motor vehicle excise, the second larger commitment was delayed for the regi-, from the registry. So I believe we'll be seeing that hit our book as a commitment in May. So we should expect another no influx of cash. Again, the biggest commitment is usually around February and March, but still. I think last year may have been somewhere between 100 and 150,000 for the commitment, which for the most part, the good majority of that collect is collected within that fiscal year. And then on the expenditure side, we're still in really good shape. Overall, we're looking at 79% spent. I'm not really seeing any issues in any of the departments. We've had a warm winter. We did exceed our snow and ice budget by about 70,000. But we haven't, except for just this last, or last week, we haven't tapped the reserve fund. We just tapped it for about 33 grand for some repair work at the school that really needed to be done. So, you know, we're really looking good. And in the public safety, again, as in prior months, it does look like we're ahead or we've been expanding. And that really is is because of our COVID related expenses. And through April, I think we're, we're close to about $600,000 spent between FEMA eligible and CARES eligible expenses. We still have, I believe, three applications in the pipeline for FEMA that we're still waiting on the results. It goes through the state and then it goes through FEMA. The line has told me a few times that that it's checked and it's still, you know, in process. It's at the next level, but you know, these things can take a little bit. The good news on that is that FEMA has changed its reimbursement for FEMA eligible expenses from 75% to 100%. So, you know, fingers crossed, what we have submitted, you know, if eligible, will be, will be eligible for 100% reimbursement versus a 75% that we originally expect. And that's really the recap on the general fund and I'd be happy to take any questions you have.
Cory?
Yeah, if, let's say we get 100% of that match, or sorry, we get 100% back from the FEMA money. How does that displacement occur? Will we see that displacement pop up in free cash or is that already marked for somewhere else? So does that pop up?
It will. So right now, all of these expenses that I'm referring to, when I say we spent, you know, $600,000 through April, all of those will be grant eligible. Just which grant? I don't know yet. So if we don't have any word back from FEMA, we're going to go with basically what we submitted, do a journal entry between the funds and and really what I've heard from various webinars and talking with the state is, especially with some of this new ARPA money, is that they're all going to be somewhat interchangeable anyway. So at the end result of this, there may just be an accounting nightmare, but something that we will work through and allocate to various grants that that are appropriate.
Okay. Thank you for figuring that out on behalf of the town.
Sure.
Don, a question about our, our revenue collections because it is so good. I mean, is that, is, is there a reason for that? I imagine most towns, and I know certainly even Cohasset, a number of years ago, we weren't at, you know, 97% any time of the year.
Right. Well, a part of it is is definitely we adjusted our revenues down from prior years and motor vehicle excise is continuing to be strong. We have received and recorded some payments from real estate tax liens and deferrals. So that doesn't actually show up in local receipts. That shows up in our property tax collections. However, that's not a budgeted revenue source because that is a commitment from prior years that was entered or leaned. But then what is in the local receipts is a penalty is an interest related to those tax lines. We normally budget, I think, 20 to 30,000. We have a surplus of 133 in there right now. And then again, we're a little bit light compared to prior years for our meals tax. But we're actually, we're kind of caught up from from earlier in the year and I think we're at about 91%. We are expecting another receipt in June. I just got some notifications from DLS that there are going to be some changes in when businesses have to file their meals tax. But I don't know how that's exactly going to impact us for this last quarter, but I am anticipating it will hit our target for the fiscal year on meals and rooms tax.
Also, really good budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a benefit of being conservative. Absolutely.
Any other question? Oh, Paul?
Yeah. So, you know, from the the state revenues, we're doing much better as a town, you know, the state revenues came out of mid, mid this month and the surprising thing is the meals tax is down about 25%. It's about 23% down from last year, year to year. The excise tax, which is the, you know, a big source of revenue for the town is up, you know, up 25% for the state. So if that follows through, then our, our excise tax may come in at a higher level than what we expect. Again, probably pent up demand where people have not bought a new car and it's not spending a lot of money on on vacations and they may be able to buy the new cars. So that may come out in the wash, but it looks like the the state revenues are doing well from the income taxes as well. So it's a rebound, which is very helpful. And I think the conservative budgeting helped out a lot in the town this year quite a bit. That's it.
Absolutely.
Great. Any other questions about the budget?
If no, Chris, you want to move on to water, please?
I must say, I was surprised that there was very little discussion on this last night at town meeting and again, I think kudos to everybody for putting together a slideshow that really explained everything real, very well. And I think, you know, warded off the the questions.
Absolutely, absolutely. So water and sewer continue to do well, just like the general fund through April, we're at 93.3%. Again, the drivers for water and sewer are our user trucks. So a lot more water being used this year, which you can see we're already at 100% collected for usage revenue. And May is when fourth quarters are due. So it'll be interesting to see where we actually end up. May was when it was committed. I think June is when it's due. I apologize. So it'll be interesting to see where we end up. We've had a number of connections as well. Usually budget about 80,000 for that. And we've already collected 136,000. So that's one of those items that that's variable. So that's one of those items that that's variable anyway, which again, water has been conservative and continue to be conservative in their approach to budgeting, as does the general fund. So really positive to see. I expect to continue with the good retained earnings number. As you've gone through a town meeting information, one thing we did do within the capital article was to actually appropriate four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of retained earnings, basically rescinding a borrowing authorization for last year for the Allen Street Quarter Water Main Project and replace the borrowing with retained earnings. So that a borrowing incurring interest costs, we were able to utilize some retained earnings to to pay for that instead. And I think we'll be more than adequately, you know, want to quote reimbursed within retained earnings by the end of the year. Then expenses, same thing. On the actual expenses, we're at sixty five. I know they've had some projects going on. They're putting in a fence, which is not shown in the actual reports. That's about forty thousand that that isn't being reported. But basically, what I'll do in May and June reports is show the full budget encumbered, which our POs put in for goods and services that we've expected to incur by the end of the year and really have that overall kind of where we're at from an encumbered standpoint as well.
Great. Paul has a question.
So with the the usage fee, as you know, people start going back instead of working from home, going back to work and the kids go back to school. Have they looked at the potential usage drop when people are now going back to work?
So the the budget for fiscal twenty two was based on previous usage. It wasn't factored in for the bump that we're seeing in fiscal twenty one, which is which is good. So Paul, if it does go back to those prior year levels of actual usage, we're going to still be in good shape. Unless we see a significant downturn in usage, then, you know, we'll just have to monitor. But the estimates and the forecast were based on prior usage before the pandemic.
So conservative forecasting to begin with. Good. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other questions on water? Okay.
Right. Finish it off with sewer. Sewer is actually at a hundred and one percent on the revenue collected. Again, following with water. Bill based on usage. So eighty one percent user charges. But what is really making up this surplus is again, connections, which or a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollar surplus. Again, you know, those variable. This is essentially fall to the bottom line or retained earnings, along as all other revenue sources that are consistent. And again, grinder pump maintenance fee, which I mentioned, I believe, in the last month or the month before. This is because we budgeted to only go for the first quarter of the fiscal year. And the plan was for the sewer department to release all of the grinder pumps earlier than we did, but that did not happen. So we did bill additional months because we were still maintaining them. So you do see that surplus. We have released the grinder pumps at this point. I'd have to double check with where we are on final numbers of. I know the sewer department was waiting for some documents to be returned and and things like that. But you'll also see the grinder pump sales line forty eight fifty there, about a thirty three thousand dollar surplus. Really, the bulk of that and what that really is is when the documents were sent out and the releases were sent to residents, a fee was requested of a hundred and six dollars for the cost of going to the registry at ease to release lean or the easement on the property. And that's what the bulk of that revenue is. But yeah, a hundred and one percent collected. I expect them to continue to do well, especially with usage. I think our fourth quarter was consistent commitment wise from the prior year. And then same thing on the expenditure side, seventy three percent of general expenses. We'll take a look at what they are actually with all their encumbrances and and purchase orders in through May and June to really get a good picture of where they'll end on the expenditure side of things.
Any questions on sewer? Okay, Don, I actually just have a question. This might have been a town meeting question. But just in terms of the tiered system for the water rate increase, is there an assumption that some of the people that are in the higher rate, which I believe is the tier three, will start conserving more and drop down to tier two? I mean, was that factored into their budgeting?
That was. So again, I think we use a ten year history of usage. And so that that average over the ten years was used for those higher tiers. What we did do was then actually reduce the user charges revenue line, believe seventy five, a hundred thousand dollars to be conservative in the event, you know, tier three charge causes people to be more conservative on their use. Therefore, getting back down to set to that tier two. So we did make that adjustment in the budget. And then, you know, we'll we'll see how it all kind of pans out in the first couple of quarters next year.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Don? Other than thank you and sorry for two nights in a row, but we've made such tremendous progress. We should all be very happy with that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Bye bye.
Thanks, Don. Good night.
Okay, I'm going to I'm going to speed us through the the rest of the agenda. The next one is the memorial tree and bench policy, which we discussed at a couple of different meetings. I trust if everybody has read it enough to feel comfortable with taking a vote, I would like to ask for a motion.
One quick thing?
Yep.
It's helpful if you mute yourself in the middle of a sentence. There was a
Welcome to me.
Yeah. Let's see, page one has to be removed. Just a little bit of a wording clarification on the bottom of the first page. The final sentence, if a bench has to be removed, a plaque replaced, the sponsor will be informed. It kind of feels like there should have been a few words in there or something. I wonder if that was two sentences that got cut together. You know, because I I think it leaves open the question, obviously. You know, one case is if a bench has to be replaced because we have another, we only have X number of spots, but also if the bench is no longer is in disrepair and there's a plaque for it, you know, does the plaque go back to the sponsor if they choose not to replace the bench? It just seems like there should be more in that section.
Yeah, I agree. I'm looking for that sentence, Corey, you said, page one.
Yeah, very bottom of it. If a bench has to be removed, a plaque replaced, comma, the sponsor will be informed. Just and there's like a double space there. It looks like it got
Could it be or?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was the intention that that, you know, like if it got hit by lightning or something or or something just made it such that we were moving it or removing it, that we would be in touch with the sponsor.
Great. Yeah, that that clears up that sentence completely for me. So, yeah. If that's the change, I hope you're good with it.
Right. It's not perfect. I think that we this just gives us a place to start the conversation so that we don't end up with benches being delivered to town hall and and request to put them out on the commons. So I feel very comfortable with at least starting it. And if it becomes too cumbersome, we can always revisit.
I make a motion that we adopt the tribute tree and bench sponsor sponsorship policy with that minor change of the word or in the last sentence of the first page.
Is there a second? Great. Thank you, everyone. Corey?
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great. Next up is the process for the annual personnel review of the town manager. For for Carrie and Paul, this will be somewhat repetitious. For Corey, just still just a sort of a
Brand new.
glance forward. So Carrie and I, as chair and vice chair, are going to meet with Miriam this Friday, just to kind of review what is a standard document that we've used over the years to perform an annual performance review. And there's also sort of an outline of the process that we'll share with you as soon as we make whatever tweaks. But it's basically a the goals that we set last July will be the goals that we evaluate Chris's performance on. And there's some very specific questions. And then there's more of a some general skill level evaluation that comes second. You know, how is he communicating, et cetera, managing committees, whatever. And then there's a an opportunity for narrative. You know, the the strengths and some things, things that need improvement. So it's very there's not a lot of opportunity to deviate from from the the structure that exists for for very good reasons. So what we do is each of us will be sent the evaluation document. Each of us will fill it out on our own and review it with Chris in person or and in a Zoom call or however that gets noted. So the the obligation is to fill it out and then to review it with Chris and then submit it. And then, and this is the part that Carrie and I will talk to Miriam about. Then we do have to present the review in public at a public meeting. And we can't share amongst each other anything. So we will come and and that particular meeting is never fun for any of us, right, Chris? But 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 we do have to do it in public. And, you know, to the extent that we can focus in on sort of the the strengths and needs improvements as opposed to the whole other document is is sort of where I want to try to focus us. So basically, stay tuned. My guess is that we will do the review in public session at our last meeting in June or our first meeting in July. And we will try to get the evaluation document out to everybody as soon as possible with instructions so that we have at least three to four weeks in which to fill the form out and meet with Chris and discuss and then submit it back. So did I leave anything out, Paul and Carrie, who've been part of this before?
No.
Well, great. So stay tuned on that. And we should have information out early next week to everybody. It'll probably come from Miriam. Okay, lastly, sort of lastly, town manager update.
Okay, you had down here the debrief and next steps on town meeting. So I just want to say thank you again to everybody who participated. Two hundred and fifty eight, by the way, was the count. That was that was an increase of last year of forty five people, I think. So it was up. It was up twenty percent, but ten percent, twenty twenty percent from last year. So it was a it was a good increase. And it was a, I mean, you all know how much work goes into preparing for that night. And I am incredibly grateful for everyone who took part, because there's literally hundreds of people who take part in the process leading up to the meeting, plus hundreds of people take part in the meeting. So I want to thank everyone who attended, everyone who spoke, everyone who prepared, all the work that went into it. And I do want to also thank all the people behind the scenes, Ron Minard and his team and Nick and the demon, their team and Glenn Pratt and their team and Bill Quigley and Chief Sylvia and their teams for all the work they did behind the scenes. A lot of planning, the music circus, by the way, a very big thank you to them for hosting and having the bathrooms up on for us this year, which was a great, great bonus. And and all the vendors that were so flawless in getting everything together. It really turned out. It was a great night and it was a very productive night. It was a lot of good conversation and very grateful to everyone for, again, the participation and for the voters for moving everything forward. I mean, you know, there were some very, very meaty things on there. There always are. And they got a lot of really good vetting and people were comfortable at the end of the night. So and and thanks to Robin Lawrence for very, very patient. He finally got his change of the board of health to board of public health. And he took every moment of his five minutes and it gave us a really good send off. So again, so many thanks to everybody. And again, particularly to all the staff that nobody saw that really made that whole night a success. So thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
In the traditional format, what what's typical attendance in a in the before times, if you will?
Not as high as it has been last year and this year, I believe.
Okay. And the second question?
Well, it depends if there's something really
Okay, but but I mean, like
Fifty two maximum, probably three hundred. That would be a big, big town meeting.
Okay, so so higher than average, I guess. So, you know, and I wonder if, Chris, and, you know, I've got, I've heard some feedback, both, you know, positive and negative. I think we were talking about it earlier a little bit. You know, that that there obviously are very, a lot of advantages to this format. And there's also some disadvantages. Chris, have you received any feedback specifically from residents that, you know, is worth sharing, things that, you know, maybe are outside of the what we've already talked about or considered?
I was just quickly jumping on the town clerk's webpage. By the way, we had three hundred and forty nine people in two thousand and nineteen. And there were it looks like four hundred some odd people in twenty eighteen, and then it drops down. There was a couple of very big issues on those years. So typical attendances between, you know, around three hundred between three and four hundred people. So it's a little bit, a little bit down from those, but up from last year. Now, the general, the general vibe, but I haven't seen the general vibe I got was pretty, pretty positive. I mean, Dan Evans was very grateful for, you know, people's participation and all that. It did get a little chilly at the end, admittedly, effort for May. Though, you know, the night, the weather really broke really well for everyone. I think it was really good. So I think it's something to think about as we go into the fall. I mean, obviously, doing a special in the fall, but probably not kind of want to do that indoor, I think, not doing outdoors. And and I've got some elements. One thing that I did hear positive feedback on, and I had some folks who were watching at home, Facebook feed was was flawless. I was told. It looked great. It was, I don't know if it was an HD signal, but it was a really high quality signal and sound. It wasn't quite as good on some of the other platforms it sounded like. And the videos, people seem to really like those, where they help move the meeting, they help crystallize the issues and it saves some time. I don't think everything lends itself to that necessarily. Went off to do like a whole night of videos. I think mixing in live presentations and, you know, there's sometimes when I'm just standing up there reminding people it's a ministerial article. It's just good to have that. But I think people like them. I think people like producing them, quite frankly. I think it helped crystallize some of the issues. And I think, I think whether we go ever do outdoors again, or we return to a more traditional form, I think I think having some multimedia aspects to it are helpful. I think it helps. And we live in an age where it just works better that way, you know, and it can, you can also show pictures and things you can't otherwise do. And charts and graphs and all. So and again, what Jason did, another example, Jason had a narrated PowerPoint. You can do those too, right? I mean, so I think there's, I think that people like doing them. I joke when I called Lauren Lynn the video, a video star today.
Yeah.
And and it but it was, you know, zoning articles are complex and and those were very well laid. And again, Katie and her team did a great job with the very, very needy. Those were huge articles, did a lot of work in advance. So the feedback so far, people, I think people who attended were very pleased. And I think some of the aspects of the video and all were really good, too. So I think we want to incorporate those in the future.
You know, just just to underscore that. And Chris, please thank all your team that worked so hard. It's hard to appropriately thank everybody, except it really was very smooth. I think Carrie in one of your videos, you know, you just, you, I don't remember the term you used, but it was practically perfect.
Said flawless.
Flawless. And I do think the balance of the the videos is really good. And the fact that there were, you know, the the narrated PowerPoint, then there were the individual members of the town building committee. And then there was Lauren doing her presentation. Each of those videos were different from each other, too. So it just flowed. I did send an email to Dan Evans this morning, just thanking him and congratulating him on a, you know, he really is masterful at setting a tone of of respect and curiosity. And I I really appreciate what he does for it. He wrote back to me. He just said, the ease with which most motions pass without discussion is a tribute to all the good work and discussions that occur prior to the meeting. And I think we all appreciate how much work goes into goes into getting these issues vetted and ready for prime time at at town meeting. And that's thus the success. And I was also sitting next to Lenny Koppelman, who was in there and as town council last evening. And he was impressed, couldn't believe how smooth it went and also congratulated us and particularly Chris on the writing of the warrant and it being very clear and understandable. And then again, later in the motion. So anyway, thank you and congratulations, everyone, on that.
So I will just, just put the code on that. So if if local government and particularly at a town level is the ultimate team sport, town meeting is a Super Bowl, right? We built up and built up and built up and built up, though halftime show, but, you know, so there were like, we had little videos. So it it so it really was a culmination of a lot of hard work. And and thank you again to everyone who participated, because it this is what makes the town go, right? People make the town go. So thank you for everyone who participated. One more thing I want to share is about this weekend. So a reminder that Memorial Day is happening. Now, not no parade, I'm afraid, but a reminder that Memorial Day is happening. Uh, now, not no parade, I'm afraid, but um, so the Healing Field, I have not been by the Healing Field. So I I I have not seen any of it. I'm guessing it's up. I have not yet seen it. Um, I I look forward to going by it because it's always a very moving tribute. Uh, the um, the dedication ceremony will be on Saturday. Uh, this coming Saturday, the twenty-ninth at one P M. And that's right by the Legion. So any of you want to participate, you're invited. And then there are three observances on Memorial Day itself. Eight o'clock at POW MIA Square, which is right here. It's Main Street Depot Court. That's at POW MIA Square. Uh, the Gold Star Mother's Memorial, which is at the um, cemetery, um, the Woodside Cemetery. I'll write off, write the border of Hingham. And that, and you have to go, go into the cemetery and and kind of go off the the Gold Star Mother's Memorial is kind of hidden but adjacent to the MBTA parking lot. Because you only get in it from the main entrance. You have to keep going in the back. So that's at nine o'clock. And then there's a wreath laying and ceremony at the Metres Memorial Park at the waterfront at eleven o'clock. So if any of you or any members of the public can attend any of those, feel free. Uh, restrictions on outdoor mask wearing expire over the weekend. Uh, that said, uh, you know, we still encourage everyone to be safe. Uh, the weather is looking a little bit uh, touch and go um, for Saturday. It doesn't look like an all-day rain, but it could be a little cloudy with some sprinkles. So just take that into account. Uh, but all the uh, the events will go on, rain or shine. So again, that's uh, that's the event schedule for this weekend.
Just to jump on that, also Saturday is the first farmer's market from ten to two on Saturday on the common. And um, if if you are able to attend the Healing Fields dedication, I do encourage everybody to be there. Usually the select board stands together. And I don't know if if it'll be the same format, but um, to the extent that we can show as united a front as possible being there, it's really a special, special Cohasset unique experience. And um, it's a great honor to participate in that.
Scheduling, so you all, uh, so June third is the tentative meeting for next week. Uh, for the review of legal RFP questions and getting all it together. It's Thursday night. And is everyone okay with that at this point? I'm sorry, six o'clock? Is that what we're talking about?
To start at six.
Set a time for that.
Um, I I think Tracy, is that right? That that's consensus time that came back was six?
Yes, from who I heard from, yes.
Okay. Um, so that that'll, that'll go out to the materials about everybody. If that's a problem.
What day was that again? I just wanted to double check.
The third, June third. It's a week from Thursday.
Okay.
Um, and I it's a sole topic. The the only topic is review of all the RFP questions and doing that. So
Okay, thank you.
And and by then, um, and I I will ask Michelle, remind Michelle to send the same thing out to the select board members that was sent out too. But I believe all the committees, commissions, boards have received an email from um, Michelle Leary uh, just asking them to submit questions. I know Conservation Commission discussed it at their meeting um, to submit questions. And that's the, that's what we'll review. We'll kind of review the questions and ideas and scenarios or whatever that's been presented by um, boards and committees, including ourselves. We'll review that. We'll put together and we'll discuss sort of the format for interviews, you know, whether it's a half hour, whether it's a half, you know, an hour, how we're going to schedule, how we're going to do it, what we're going to ask them in person, what we're going to ask, or you know, in um, submit questions to them and ask them to give us the answers. And obviously, it has to be uniform across the board. Um, so it's really important that we um, we take the time and and do this right. Um, and then hopefully get the interviews um, within the couple of weeks. So, um, all right. I'm getting sleepy too, Corey.
That's it. That's it for me. It's, so you're, it's on to you first.
Great. Select board comments, Corey?
Uh, yeah, so uh, obviously, uh, Monday is Memorial Day. Uh, just to share um, with my family history, my grandfather, George Thomas Evans, was a member of the one hundred and tenth Anti-Aircraft Division. Uh, his uh, division was uh, widely documented, but uh, among other things, they were uh, part of D-Day at Omaha. Um, they were uh, obviously in Battle of the Bulge as well. They were one of the first uh, units to shoot down. I think they were the first uh, unit to shoot down a German plane on French soil. Uh, they protected, um, you know, uh, high-value targets across Europe. Um, and a few years ago, he's from Middletown, Connecticut, a few years ago. Um, after about a twenty-year push, uh, a bunch of veterans and residents of Middletown, Connecticut got together and built a really wonderful um, Veterans Memorial there. And it meant a lot to to my grandfather, who has passed. Um, and it meant a lot to my family. Um, so thank you, everyone in this community who does the same because um, you know, while my family comes from maybe a different place, uh, you know, your efforts um, really matter to us. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, this weekend, it really is. It's a special Cohasset weekend. You know, the the neighbor, the neighboring town, Hingham, has the Fourth of July Parade, but we really respect uh, the Memorial Day weekend. It's a, it's a big weekend for town. And last year, it was a kind of quiet. Um, this is going to be the very beginning of, you know, the opening up and to respect for all of the people who served and never came home. Um, that's, that's a huge uh, part of our town. We've lost a lot in the past uh, in various wars. Um, and along those lines, you you got to be careful and safe out there as the summer opens up. Memorial Day, uh, in my view, is the beginning of summer. And just be very careful. We're going to be finally being social. So as Chief Quigley said, just be careful, be be sober, be, you know, be polite and and try to get through the the summer without too much uh, too much concern and trouble. That's it.
Carrie?
Yeah, I echo all of these things. I know the Healing Field is one of my favorite things to see every year. It's always really touching. So that will be exciting to be able to see each other in person again for these Memorial Day events. Also plugging the farmer's market. I know they're really excited to open. They've worked really hard to have this special opening day. So try to make an appearance there from ten to two. Also, it's not too late to order a pride flag or pride sign from the Cohasset Pride Project at CohassetPrideProject.com. A lot of residents and local businesses have ordered theirs. And it's really exciting to see that getting off the ground as we head into June as well.
Carrie, do you know when they're going to be distributed, the flags?
I heard that they might actually have a table at the farmer's market distributing some and offering some as well, but within, supposedly by June first.
Great. Thank you. Um, we've covered most of what I wanted to say, which again is to um, encourage people to participate safely in the Memorial Day um, honors this weekend. Um, farmer's market on Saturday. Um, thank you to everybody who participated, came to, contributed to a really successful town meeting. Um, and I do have to share because Corey did sort of my Memorial Day, because I do this quietly every year, which is, um, my brother is a um, Marine Corps fighter pilot. Um, flew F-eighteens and did three tours in Iraq. And his first um, flight partner um, died of, ended up dying of cancer um, that they think um, might have been caused by the burning oil fields in Iraq when they were there. Um, so every year when we do march, um, I carry a picture of Lieutenant Colonel Lucia Lush. And uh, really, it's, 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 there are still people, you know, we we tend to think about sort of our greatest generation who did so much, but there's a lot of collateral damage, even in some of our more recent wars, where we think we've become a little more civilized and the death toll isn't as much. But the toll on that, that families and friends of our service members take um, on a daily basis is is pretty significant. Um, so, um, you know, anyway, so moving on, um, last, we have two sets of minutes. Um, if anybody would like to move the minutes of April twenty-seventh and May eleventh?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, oh, sorry, roll call, please.
Uh, Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schreiber, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. And we don't have Jack with us this evening for the
Stuck here the rest of the night. What are we going to do?
Yeah. Anybody? Bueller?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schreiber, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Great. Good night, everybody. Thank you for your hard work the past month and two.
Thank you all.